Thank you and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is April 5th, 2006. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35. Welcome to our viewers and rebroadcast in the evening. We also webcast through the city's homepage at www.lacity.org where there's a wealth of information about your elected officials, about the city council, our committees, and the city departments from Los Angeles here. We also are being broadcast on council phone, which is a way you can call in via telephone and listen to the proceedings of the Los Angeles City Council. That number is (213) 621-CITY. There are other local numbers in different parts of the city as well, but our committee hearings and the full council are all there on council phone. We now have council members Grul, Labange, and Rosendahl. Myself makes four. We need 10 members for a quorum. It is about five minutes after the hour. Want to ask council members Cardenas, Han, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes. I see Mr. Smith just walked in. Mr. Weiss, if you'd come down, and Mr. Zine, if you would come down. Mr. Wesson is excused today, and we expect Mr. Weezer a little later. As soon as we have 10 members, we will have a quorum and we will begin this meeting. Thank you. Thank you, council members. Cardenas, Grul, Han, Labange, Padilla, Parks, and Perry, Rosendahl, Smith. We now have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
The hour is 10:09. Thank you, colleagues. Just a reminder, the meeting's starting at 10 o'clock. If we can continue to try to make that our goal, it's much appreciated. A first order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds. If there's no objection, there's a unanimous vote, and those are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objections, those are approved as well.
Ms. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Colleagues, we'll now take up general public comment. These is public comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but not directly on our agenda. I'd like to invite first Sochi Luhan to come forward to speak for two minutes, to be followed by Roberto Macias and Josefina Corona. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, city council members. My name is Sochi Luhan. I'm with the Chicana and Chicano Studies Alumni Association at California State University Dominguez Hills. The South Central Farm serves as a valuable resource to the surrounding communities of District 9. I have yet to see councilperson Perry set foot within the South Central Farm, which is tragic. She should be doing everything within her legal means to protect and preserve this largest urban garden in the nation, the South Central Farm. I urge all council members who are having sidebars, but I urge you at this point to please do what you can to save this green space within the community, for the community. It gives South Central Los Angeles a more beautiful connotation. Please help to save this farm. It is an imperative mission that you have as council people to preserve the green spaces. Many of you have offered green spaces to the farmers that do not equal the amount of land that is already in use and being used productively. I urge you to use those spaces that you have offered to open up your own community gardens. And maybe you could also have the farmers come down and show your community how they can utilize that space to produce. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Luhan. Roberto Macias, Josefina Corona, Maria Vina, okay. And Lisa Vina was also here, and Jose Corona, and Michael Carrion is our next speaker. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Michael Carrion. I had somebody pass out some straws. I was wondering if you guys would take a few minutes to open those straws and try to breathe out of them. That's how my son and my grandson feel when their asthma kicks in. We have illegal construction going on in my community, mudslides coming down. Again, Mr. Weezer is not here, but his staff has done nothing. I've gone all the way to, all the way up the chain, and finally, they're doing something about it. But again, Mr. Weezer speaks of accountability. I never got any help from his office. His office is finally saying, oh, we'll call you, we'll call you, never return a call. I'm tired of people telling me about accountability. The mayor has been on my issue for a little while. I have thugs running around in my community, gang members, tattoos, everything that thugs do. They do home invasions, they steal, they rob, they do everything. The only problem I have is that they hide behind a shield, an LAPD shield. We are paying them, we are training them to do home invasions. And then, what's the mayor done about the police department? He wants an audit, asked Laura Chick to audit the police department, and give you a summary of how much we've paid out in claims to bad police officers. If you took all that money, you probably have the money you need for the new police officers you need. We don't need more police officers, we need a better quality of police officer. I don't speak to Badger, the police department, because my uncle was an LAPD detective which died on the job, okay? I'm here to protect his name and what he gave his life for, okay? But apparently, everybody seems to be too busy to understand what it is I'm talking about. I'm talking about a quality life for Angelenos, not just the Angelenos that have money in their pockets, not just the Angelenos in West LA, in Bel Air, not just them, the Angelenos here in the city of Los Angeles, right down the block on Bodrian Temple.
Thank you.
Up the block in El Sereno.
If I can assist.
One day, you will listen.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Thank you very much. That closes our public comment for today, our general public comment, excuse me, if we can go to the next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing. On item 4, building and safety reports, that that matter can be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid. And on item 5, building and safety is requesting that matter be continued to April 25th.
Okay. Is there any objection to that continuance, colleagues? If not, let's continue item 5 till April, is it 26th or 25th?
April 25th.
25th, okay. And we will receive and file 4 with the balance unless anybody wants to call any of these specials. Colleagues, any specials for 1 through 6? If not, Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 7 and 8 are street vacation items noted for public hearing. On item 7, the engineer is disapproving the request, and on item 8, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay, let's open and close those public hearings and instruct the city engineer to proceed on number 8. Anybody wishing to call 7 special? If not, please prepare the roll on both items and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and the city engineer is instructed to proceed on item 8. Next items, please.
On item 9, the applicant requests a continuance to April 18th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuance till April 18th? If not, that'll be ordered. Next item?
On item 10, the applicant requests a continuance to May 10th.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing item 10 until the 10th of, that was May?
May.
If not, so ordered, without objection. Next items?
Item 11 is a budget and finance item noted for public hearing.
Okay. Let's open and close the hearing. If anybody wishes to be heard on that, please make themselves known. Seeing none, anybody wishing to call 11 special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. The next items?
Items 12 through 43 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 12 and 13 are appointments of city officials. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold those two on the desk.
That would leave council with items 14 through 43.
Okay, 14 through 43 specials. Mr. Zine, do you have them? Nope, okay, 14, Mr. Parks?
On 43, move the budget and finance report.
Okay, we'll move the budget and finance report on 43 if there's no objection. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll on the balance. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, and 42, we have a request to hold. My apologies on that.
37 special.
Which one, Mr. Cardenas?
37.
37, we'll call special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, we'll have 37, 42, and on the desk, and we have the budget and finance for 43, and 12 and 13 are held on the desk. Let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Send 15 forthwith, please. Next items?
Items 44 through 74 are items to which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We will open and close those public hearings if there's nobody wishing to be heard on those. Any specials, colleagues, on those items? Any specials? Mr. Parks?
Could we hold 52? We need some additional information.
52 we will hold. Any others? If not, let's prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next order of business?
That would take you back to the...
Since it's after 10:15, why don't we do the special meeting? During the regular meeting, if you can call the roll on special meeting?
Okay. Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
Okay. If we can take up the first item, please.
You have one item on the agenda, it's an item noted for public hearing.
Okay, we will open and close the public hearing. Nobody wants to be heard on that, colleagues? Anybody wishing to call 1 from the special meeting special? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. We'll go back to the regular meeting now.
Do you wish to take up the appointments at this time?
Let's do that first, starting with number 12.
Number 12 is the appointment of Mr. Jonathan Williams to the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners.
Mr. Williams, if you'd like to come forward here to the table, go past the ropes there if you want to come all the way to the table in front here. And I'll recognize our chair from our Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, Mr. Williams is an excellent nominee for Mayor Villarogosa, who has great compassion in the work he does. Very special school in Los Angeles is something we should all learn about and visit, but having that very practical experience about schools and education, and then being tapped by the mayor to sit on the Recreation and Parks Commission will be of great advantage to Los Angeles. So I ask you, if you would, Commissioner Designey, would you please give us a little bit your passion of why you would like to serve the city of Los Angeles and serve on this Recreation and Parks Commission, and how you see as we can interplay between parks, schools, both public and private, et cetera? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. I'm indeed delighted to be considered for such an important position. I believe that schools and parks are really central to great neighborhoods. I began my career here in Los Angeles in public school service as a school teacher. I taught in Watts area of Los Angeles Unified School District for five years prior to starting a charter school. Our main thrust was really to prepare kids for college and the workforce, and obviously, in order to have healthy minds, you need a healthy body, and parks are critical to that endeavor. I grew up in a neighborhood where parks really were the central part of my...
Excuse me one second, Mr. Williams. If I could ask everybody to please keep their conversations to a minimum, so we can give this nominee the respect that he deserves. Thank you very much. Please continue.
Thank you. I grew up in a neighborhood where the parks were central to my ability to go to college as well as participate in the community in the Long Beach area. And we specifically located near Gil Lindsay Park because of that very same effort. We wanted to take the parks back from those who we would not want at the parks, gangs and drug dealers and so forth and so on, and really bring Little League back to the neighborhood. And we've in essence done that thanks to the support of our councilwoman, Jen Perry, as well as Bank of America for investing in the park and helping us to really revitalize the Gil Lindsay Recreation Center. So we now have a partnership, a joint use partnership with Wreckin' Parks, with the Accelerated School, and we've built the gymnasium. So we're really looking forward to seeing more joint use between schools and recreation centers.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a strong recommendation from the Arts and Parks, Health and Aging Committee. We thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. Another excellent selection by Mayor Villarogosa, and we ask your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, to be followed by Ms. Perry.
Well, good morning.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Reyes is next, and then Ms. Perry. My apologies. Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning, and I'm proud to have you as a constituent in the 11th district, and I'm really proud that the mayor once again has put some really great people in leadership positions. Two questions. One, give us your background, so we can all appreciate what brings you to the table today.
Again, I began my career teaching in Los Angeles Unified School District in Watts, California, and I started a charter school in 1994. That was Aim Time Magazine's School of the Year for finding some of the most promising practices.
Let's talk about that, if I can interrupt you, because that is something I've known you for years about, and we've done some television on it when I was doing those things. Explain what you put together and how you did it and how it's operating today.
Well, what we've put together really was, it is, a model private-public partnership where we worked with the Los Angeles Unified School District and private investors in order to put together a program that has the sole purpose of preparing urban inner-city kids for college. We opened the school with elementary grades. We've expanded through high school now, and we have an 11th grade class that'll be our first graduating senior class in June of '07.
And what is that secret? The partnership between the community? I mean, explain that partnership.
The partnership consists largely of teachers, of parents, who came together, and the administration came together and said, what vision do we have for our children? Not just today, but also 10, 15 years from now. And we all coalesced around the opportunity to have decent wage-paying jobs and an opportunity to excel at the college or university of their choosing.
Taking that same energy to the next level, which is Wreckin' Park, we are obviously a city that doesn't have as many parks as we should have. How do you see yourself getting us more space, or how are we going to go about building more parks? Be they pocket parks or larger ones?
I think one thing that we need to do more of is just what we've done, is figure out a way to partner with the school district, with private philanthropy, in order to bring more resources to bear and share those resources in a more effective and efficient way. I see schools being open later in the evening, as well as parks partnering with those schools to host competitions, to bring schools together around parks, and parks and recreation together around schools.
It's music to my ears. Congratulations for stepping forward in this leadership position, and we're there with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes is next, to be followed by Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you for stepping up and volunteering your time. It's a very challenging world when we talk about open space in Los Angeles. Right now, we have embarked on a River Master Plan, in which one of the components is how we create open space, natural habitats that serve as an economic development tool in gravitating investment, so that we can clean our waterways as well as create this open space. As a board member, future board member, how familiar are you with the River Master Plan or the river process in and of itself, and the role you see Wreckin' Parks playing in that dynamic? Can you hold my time, please?
I'm not as closely familiar with the river project, but I have seen in the newspapers, kind of following it in the news, is primarily my exposure to it.
I would hope as commissioners, using sound business strategies, looking at land use patterns, that we can actually create new spaces in locations that are considered brownsville conditions, especially in those pockets in our city that are very populated, highly populated and park poor. So the river corridor lends itself to that opportunity. If we have the ability to create those links, leverage these resources between Public Works, Wreckin' Parks, the school district, and the county in their purview of land and how they manage, along with the Army Corps of Engineers. We're literally embarking on that type of effort. It's a multi-task, multi-parallel. We want to create multiple benefits in one place, and it's going to take that kind of initiative and spirit, if you will. I know the mayor has been one of the champions of redefining the face of the city by changing the role of the riverway. And I think as a board member of this important department, you would play a critical role in stimulating that relationship and carrying it out and looking at the city 10, 20 years from now. In our director, Mr. Mukri, you've got a very aggressive but diplomatic individual who's trying to create these opportunities, and with a strong board, I believe we can create new scenarios. So I share these thoughts with you, because I don't know how often I'll get to meet with you, but I'm hoping that you can carry this with you as a future board member.
Sure will. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I don't know if Mr. Mukri had a chance to tell you, Jonathan, how I enjoy calling him after hours. Did he warn you?
No.
No, he didn't warn you. And I, you know, that's right. And I, you know, I do call him before the TV shows come on, because I'm so keenly interested in making sure that the parks are safe places for families and children to play, as I know you are, that I know we're going to have a very good, we already have a good relationship. You and your co-founder, Kevin Sved, have given new life and new opportunities for the children of South Los Angeles, and in particular, in the 9th council district. So, you know, your body of work is already well-established. I just hope you get enough rest between this and what you do at the state level and running the school with Kevin. It's a huge task, and I am looking forward to working with you. And if there are no other speakers, I'd love to call to the question.
There are no more speakers, so we will take the vote up. With that, Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Let's give him a round of applause, folks. All right. Next item is item 13, our nominee for DOT General Manager. Ms. Jeff, if you'd like to come forward as well, at this time to the same table. And one of our most important appointments, colleagues, is this confirmation of the mayor's nominee for General Manager of Department of Transportation, is Gloria Jeff. Welcome. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Chair of our Transportation Committee, Ms. Grul, to open the interrogation.
I told her we'd be nice today. Colleagues, it's my pleasure, and I don't think she needs a big introduction, because she's already met with, I think, a majority of our city council. And we've had the pleasure of having her come before our committee, where we had a discussion about Los Angeles. As all of us know, and I know we have a little bit of noise in the chamber, shhhhh, thank you, thank you, that traffic has really reached a level of crisis in some parts of the city, maybe all parts of the city, but the importance of transportation, the importance of this position. And as I mentioned at the press conference when she was announced, that Gloria is one of those people that when you meet her, you just say, wow. She has the wow factor. And because of her background and experience, not only in the federal level, state level, and her willingness and understanding of the relationship between planning and transportation, the understanding that it's the little things, as well as the big transportation items that we're talking about in the city of Los Angeles, mass transit, about looking at our streets, looking at synchronization. And so we asked her in committee, although I think by the time I asked her some of these questions, she was, she had it all down, her priorities, what you'd like to see in your first year, how you'd like to see the relationship between the Department of Transportation and this council. It is an issue that every single council member has... It is an issue that every single council member has priorities and has problems and challenges, and maybe even in better ways, opportunities. So, I'd like to just actually give Gloria a few minutes to talk about her priorities that we talked about in our committee just a few weeks ago. Thank you, Mr. President. Hold my time.
Thank you. It's a real pleasure to be here. I am glad to get to this stage of my process, so that I can really get established within the department and be firmly rooted and grounded in working with the folks at LA DOT to move forward. I know that many of the members have had a chance to take a look at my resume and know all the wonderful things that I've done in my career. Let me tell you a couple of things that really are between the lines in my resume that will help you understand some of my priorities. The first is, is that transportation isn't something I'm doing simply because it was a nice, they were hiring at the time I came out of college, and it was a place to be. It was a choice that I made. It's a career that I want to stay in. And if, as I have said on a number of occasions, the only way you can really make me feel bad or punish me is to tell me I can't do transportation, and that I can't step up to a transportation challenge. So, what you have here is a true transportation aficionado who is interested in all of transportation. Traffic is a critical issue here in Los Angeles, but candidly, if we're going to solve the problems of traffic, we've got to look at all of transportation and at land use. And so, it is combining the planning expertise that I bring to the table and the unique perspective that the mayor and the council and the business community bring with respect to that land use issue, coupled with the focus on just narrowly-defined transportation and what it needs to do, that I think uniquely qualifies me for this job. My management style, which is different from my leadership style, is one that focuses on team and partnerships. I will be a firm believer in working with the business community, the city council, working with the state, the federal government, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and comparable community and neighborhood-based groups in an effort to make sure that, as we define the problem to be solved, we're all in agreement, and that, as we move forward to solutions, that we're all working toward those solutions. My leadership style is one that focuses on integrity, inclusion, excellence, responsiveness. I know that in my conversations with members of council, there have been some concerns about the nature of the responsiveness of the LA DOT. I can tell you that, right now, our focus is going to be achieving the outcomes you desire, and working together to find solutions that get us to that. There are times when the proposed solution may not get you the outcome that you want, but we're going to work toward an outcome that resolves the matter at hand. We're going to be open, transparent. You won't have to guess where we're at on an issue, and more critically, we're also going to be honest. We're not going to be afraid to tell the truth and actively seek it out as part of our process. And we're going to operate from a place of respect, both for the folks within the LA Department of Transportation, the members of council, the members of the mayor's staff, the citizens, businesses, and visitors to the city of Los Angeles. What are my priorities? I'd love to tell you that I can tell you exactly what I'm going to do for the next year, but then I wouldn't have talked to anybody, which means I wouldn't have been inclusive and open and transparent. What I will tell you is what I hope to do in the next four months. I've met with almost all of the members of council. There are a couple of members of council I've not yet had an opportunity to meet with. I'm looking forward to that. Our staffs are working right now to schedule those meetings, so that we can get to that. I want to meet with the union leadership within my organization and establish regular communications with them. I'm going to visit all of the field facilities to determine what's going on at each of the facilities within LA DOTs, and the conditions under which those employees have to work, and to hear and respond to wherever possible concerns that they may raise. I've extended an offer to every member of the council that I've met with, the members of council I've not met with. I will extend the same invitation to you. I am prepared to appear at any time in your district to discuss any transportation issue that you feel appropriate. I will come alone, or I will bring the members of the LA DOT team that are responsible for your district, in an effort to make sure that we are responding and have the folks with the knowledge and expertise. We are going to be a responsive organization. We are going to be an organization that says, "What's the matter at hand here? What's the outcome we want, and how do we get to it?" I'm not going to promise you that the solution that you give to me every time is going to be the solution we implement, but I am going to move to achieve the outcomes that you desire. We are going to work with the council and the mayor in the next four months to get our budget approved, so that we can really focus on those issues in the next year that have to be addressed with respect to traffic signal synchronization, introductions of new technology to improve the traffic flow, and quite candidly, improve our working relationship with Caltrans, so that as they make improvements to the freeway system, we're able to make comparable improvements to our road and street system. I've already met with and have an ongoing relationship with the General Manager for Planning, and I've been working with the mayor's cabinet on housing and economic development in an effort to link transportation and land use. That will continue to be a priority over the next four months and the next year. We are going to attempt to establish a regular mechanism to communicate to commuters within the city of Los Angeles what's happening on our streets. Everybody knows what's happening on the freeways. All you got to do is turn on the radio, turn on the TV, pick up your PDA, and somewhere you'll know what's happening on the freeways. But you don't have a comparable tool for your streets here in the city of Los Angeles. We're going to work to establish a communication system whereby, if there are, if there's flooding, if there is a police action or a fire action on our streets, and you need to know that, so that you can reroute, we will do that as well. We will be looking at updating our parking policies. I've discovered that, after traffic, the second most important transportation issue is parking. And so, we're going to take a look at our overall ad hoc group of parking policies and move very quickly to establish an overall parking policy or groups of parking policies. And then finally, we're going to focus on safety. The number of pedestrians that are at risk in this city is phenomenal, and we want to make sure, not only that we focus on safety for the drivers, but for pedestrians and for the people who work for LA DOT, because if we don't take care of the folks who work at LA DOT and their work environment, we will find that many of the objectives that we wish to accomplish cannot be achieved. And that, ladies and gentlemen, very quickly, are my priorities for the next four months. I look forward to working with you to establish my priorities beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria, very much for that thorough presentation. And just to highlight a few things that you talked about, which I think goes to the heart of some of the issues with the city council. One is, and Ms. Hahn and I have talked about this, and I think it was Mr. Smith, you know, where are, where are our streetlights that we want, that we've asked for? Where is the stop sign or the speed humps? And I know in the past, what we've done, and many council members did this, and when I was first elected, was to tell you exactly how to solve the problem, rather than, "Here's the problem, help us solve it." But I think that was oftentimes based on people's frustration as to, you know, "Let's solve it." So, it's my hope that, with your leadership and the leadership of DOT, and I've seen some changes, I think, in the last couple of years, about focusing on that direct constituent response. We think that is critically important. Also, you mentioned the working conditions, and particularly, I know, for our DOT traffic officers in the facility that's in my district, their communication system there is, I think, in the dark ages. So, looking forward to working with you on that, as well as, as we talk about communications, the importance of having a public information officer. I know that's music to your ears. We've been talking about it. It's one of my priorities, and I see the mayor's office here. I've told them the same thing, hi, me, to be able to ensure that we have the kind of communication. This last weekend, I have to say, the department did a fabulous job on Laurel Canyon, in one, having their officers there, but two, having signage at the, you know, as far down as they can to tell people not to go on Laurel Canyon. That was impressive. We had it on the news, but I think we can even improve further. I want to mention again, and the pedestrian issue, I'm introducing a motion today, in fact, to talk about some of those areas where we have seniors and the concern where they're unable to get across. In some areas, we might need a little longer time period for them to cross the street. We'll be working with you on that. I see my time is going over, so I will probably push my button again. But the one thing that's most impressive about your resume is your federal experience. We all know that the federal dollars that are so critical, not only to be allocated to us, but to be spent, are an important aspect of a transportation plan and a vision here in Los Angeles. So, thank you, Gloria. I'll say another few words, but I also want to thank the mayor for appointing you. This is really an excellent appointment, and I look forward to our discussion this morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Zein, to be followed by Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Remember our meeting that we had recently?
Yes.
And I mentioned something to you about a problem that we were having in communication with the Department of Transportation. And I'm informed by my staff this morning that the police department did a news conference about photo red light. We were not informed. I sent a letter to, prior to your arrival, to the Department of Transportation on January 10th, to Mr. Glenn Agora, inquiring about the photo red light, which I was concerned that we put back in operation. We never received a response to that. We never received a reply from the Department of Transportation on the letter, which I'll share with you. The concern that I have is that Department of Transportation be responsive to the communities, to transportation issues, and to this body that is responsible for quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. And when something falls apart, as it's had, now, I'm a critic of the Department of Transportation, not the workers on the street, but the administration has not been responsive. And I hope that your arrival will make them responsive. But from January 10th to today, never received a response, and then my staff informs me that they had a news conference announcing this, and no one ever told us about it. And we've been at the forefront to try and bring this photo red light back into operation in the city of Los Angeles. So, I welcome you to Los Angeles. We had a long conversation about your experiences. You're going into a department that's had problems. You're going into a department that has not had the best reputation with resolving issues of transportation. And I have that enforcement background with the police department, where they have to work with the other agencies.
Yes, we do.
And this body, and I'm sure you will do that. And I will share this with you, because it troubles me that, when a council office sends a letter, that we don't get a response, and then there's a news conference months later, and we're not informed of it. It just shows that what we ask, what we say, doesn't matter. And I know that, from your past experience with the federal government, your past experience in other parts of the country where you've dealt with it, that you've had a good relationship with the people that have to make those policy decisions. So, I hate to, you know, shed some negative on this this morning, but we just found out about this today, that they have this news conference. No one informed us about it. No one kept us informed of anything that was taking place, and our concern about getting this back in place on the photo red light, because traffic collisions, pedestrian collisions, all those incidents, and the commuters that have to be bogged down in the gridlock that we have every single day. We feel for them, because we don't have the magic helicopter, we don't have the magic wand to go through traffic. We've got to fight it with everyone else. And as we mentioned in the meeting we had, you're going to see what that's all about when you have to travel and get to meetings different times. So, I'll share this with you. I hope you create some dust over there to shake it up, as we say, to make it more responsive. It's really a concern to me, and I'm sure some of my colleagues. And welcome to Los Angeles. So, you've got my full support, and I know that you've got the cane to push those people, to get them moving down the path.
We will move forward. You'll get a response. I will apologize on behalf of the organization. I don't know what happened.
That was before, it was before you arrived. Well, I remember we discussed it, because I'm very passionate about trying to make traffic safety. So, I don't blame you for it. I don't fault you for it, but some of the folks there just don't understand.
And we will move forward, and I won't have to apologize again.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Rosendahl, Reyes, Perry, Smith, Hahn, Parks, and Gruel is the queue right now. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I got to say, your music to my ears. The 11th District is a little bit like the frog that was put in the water, and as you turn the gas on, gradually, the frog found itself in boiling water. We in the 11th District, your predecessor, came by the horseshoe to me and whispered, his last moments here, "Do you know, Rosendahl, that we rank things one to 10, 10 being the worst? Your entire district is a 10." And I said, "Well, thank you very much." And of course, I shared that with you when we had our one-on-one interview. Another thing I really like is you are joined at the hip with the Planning Department. Planning and transportation have to be joined at the hip. And you just came in now, Gail has just come in now, and I think the two of you together will look at every decision with planning and transportation infrastructure. What has happened in the past is, somebody would build a housing, nobody would build a transportation infrastructure, and the commercial and all that were never linked properly. So, I'm really looking forward to your leadership, and I also am thrilled that you've agreed to come into the district. We're going to travel together, and we're going to go all over the place.
Yes.
I'll point out where all the left-hand turn signals are that I need, where we need the synchronizing lights, and most importantly, how we need to get the Expo line expeditiously to the beach, and the Green Line, not only into the airport, but down into the South Bay and up Lincoln Boulevard, and whatever energies we can do together to get that red line subway built. Once we get some mass transit links, my district will have some relief. The second is the regionalism of the airport. We need to tie all those airports together in mass transit, and I know you're going to provide that leadership. So, welcome aboard, and again, thank you, Mayor Vera Ragosa, for bringing you to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. So, I was going to say, welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
As you can see, this is not a city where one size fits all.
Truly.
We are in a place where we've embarked on very ambitious rail line programs in communities that are transit-dependent, and certain parts of the city where that level of transit dependency is much higher than other parts. And therein lies my question to you. In terms of connecting people to the rail lines and giving them an option, what's your perspective on using shuttles and local circulators that can penetrate the residential areas, that allows a person that second thought before they leave their home and say, "Maybe I don't need my car. Maybe I can walk one or two, maybe three blocks, catch a shuttle to get me to the rail line and/or that busy intersection where I have four or five bus lines." Can you share some thoughts on that? Please hold my time.
Councilmember Reyes, I'm a firm believer in what a friend of mine has labeled as "front door options," which is, as you walk out the front door of your home, you have choices about how you travel. You can walk, you can ride a bike, you can drive, you can get on public transit. I'm a firm believer in taking a hard look at the dash system that the city currently operates. We have it in some 23-plus communities to see if there's an opportunity to expand it to serve exactly what you described, as a shuttle service to the regional transit system that's out there, whether it is the rapid, bus rapid transit system, whether it is the rail lines, whether it is simply regular bus service. So, one of the things that I hope to do in the next year is to work with the folks at MTA, to work with the folks within LA DOT, to see if we can coordinate that local feeder service to the rail lines.
There has been this discussion, and some advocates, mainly the Bus Riders Union, have laid out a position where they feel this city, this county, has been very biased against low-income folks, that our transit system reflects a class issue, where the least priority, the least amount of funding goes to those that are most transit-dependent. And I believe that we can put together a shuttle system, a feeder system, that can augment our rail lines and our bus lines. It would change that perspective. There was a while there where we would have buses coming from downtown to the suburbs, air-conditioned, very clean, very frequent, very convenient. Yet our local bus riders had to sit in the rain, stand in the rain, in the hot sun, insufficient shade, insufficient seats for the seniors, and yet they're the ones that are mostly riding the buses. So, you had this two-tier perspective as to how we allocate our resources. So, again, anything we can do to change the physical realities of those that are transit-dependent, I think we go a long way in increasing our ridership and our rail lines, and as much as improving our congestion, if you will, in our major centers where we have high levels of densities in very small areas. So, I appreciate your being here.
Thank you. I look forward to working with council as we look to provide that expanded service, and assuring that there is a consistent level of service for all of the residents of Los Angeles, to, one, identify the service, and then working with you to find the dollars within the budget of the city to provide that service as well. I know we can work together and achieve that outcome.
As Chair of Planning, Land Use, and Management, both the Chair of Transportation, we've talked about a joint hearing. We have a brand-new director in the Planning Department. Now, we have a brand-new director in the Transportation Department. I think it's timely that we join together and talk about these dynamic issues in a very, very clear way. So, I appreciate working with you, and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, followed by Mr. Smith, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Gruel for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to you, and I look forward to taking you through the district and having you see some of the things that I think should be priorities in the 9th Council District. One of the things, or one of the broad issues that I want you to think about is, in community meetings... One of the things, or one of the broad issues that I want you to think about is, in community meetings, people complain mightily about speeding through their residential areas. And, you know, everybody has a different opinion about speed humps, speed bumps, or whatever, speed dips, stop signs, and whether they're traffic calming measures or not. But I can tell you that in the 9th District, we have an enormous backlog. And I do need your help in directing the department on clearing up the backlog on the bread-and-butter things like stop signs, crosswalks, flashing pedestrian lights. We have a large population of young children, you know, walking with their parents to and from school. We have a very high incidence of hit-and-run pedestrian accidents in the district. I'm holding an event later today to announce a reward for a little girl who was hit near an elementary school, hit-and-run. Today, this afternoon, it's a big problem. I can tell you, since I've been with the city since 1990, that our backlog in transportation is significant. On the little things in life, they're small in the sense that, of course, public transportation is far more significant. But it's the little things that can make a difference to people in their own neighborhoods. And also lets them know that they, their voices have been heard when they can complain and say, "I need a stop sign. I need a crosswalk. I need a warning sign up because the kids are in the neighborhood or seniors cross here." And that we respond in, you know, less than two years. I've been told by the department that it takes up to two years to get a stoplight. That's too long if you have a street where there's a lot of accidents happening or kids are crossing. So, I look forward to working with you on issues like that.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and again, welcome to Los Angeles, Ms. Jeff. We had a nice, big traffic jam citywide yesterday, just in your honor. Whenever it rains in this town, people go crazy, and you saw a good example of that yesterday. I was very excited in my discussions with you because I saw someone, as the reputation before you got here was, someone who is willing to think outside the box, willing to promote and work very hard for what you believe in is the right thing to do. And I think that's going to be refreshing for us because I think what we've all, you've heard from a lot of us, we've had experience with the department that has not been good. And experience with the department where it takes too long to get things done. I have a case right now that I told my district staff, if we don't have an answer from DOT today, we're going to put a motion in Friday. We've been debating for six months whether we put a stop sign in at a corner or put speed humps on the street. For six months, we've been debating with your staff, one simple little thing like that. I think we spent more time debating it than it will take to install one or the other. And these are the kind of things that just take too long in DOT. And so, I was excited when we had our discussion, that you're willing to move these kind of issues along. You heard from Mr. Design, Ms. Perry, and others, where these issues just don't get resolved in a timely, meaningful way. And so, I want you to know, I think you've heard from all of us, we're going to stand behind you as you go through that department, try and bring efficiencies to get projects done, and that's what we really want the most here. And secondly, you know, I heard you say to me in our meeting that you have ideas that sometime aren't popular. And you could fix a lot of traffic flow on a lot of streets by just taking street parking off, but it'll make a lot of our business community mad. I am, for one, willing to say to you, I wanted to have those discussions. And I think those discussions need to take place around here because most of us are willing to have those discussions and maybe consider such activities that maybe somehow restrict some of the commercial activity in our city, but move traffic better. And so, I don't want you to be afraid to bring those forward. Your reputation is you're not one that's to be afraid of doing that. So, please bring those ideas to us. I know Ms. Gruel, who's Chair of the Committee, is open to all these ideas and will encourage that. And so, I just want to encourage you to be open, think outside the box. If you think it's crazy, bring it to us anyway because we're willing to consider anything right now to help move traffic in the city of Los Angeles. And this council has shown a willingness to be very receptive to new ways of thinking about things. And so, as you work with the planning department, transportation, come to us. I know Ms. Gruel will be more than receptive, as all of us will. Once again, welcome. I'm very excited to have you here because I see a new energy coming in this department that we really wanted. And so, thank you for being here, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, and again, let me add my bit of welcome to Los Angeles. You're certainly highly qualified, and as you said, you've done some great things in the past. And I think you're coming into a department that certainly has a lot of challenges, and I'll just touch on a couple of things. One, I really hope that you will take a leadership position in thinking about natural or man-made disasters that may happen in the city of Los Angeles. I've always felt like if something major were to happen anywhere in the city, the thought of evacuation would be ruined if there became gridlock at one intersection.
Exactly.
Then nobody would move. And we know, when we just had a major power outage last year, that the communication between the Department of Transportation and neighborhoods where signals had gone out was really slow in coming. I know for me, representing the Harbor area, you know, we have like one way in and one way out. We're like a peninsula down there. And I've always felt like if there was something to happen at the Port of Los Angeles, Department of Transportation could play a huge role in evacuating that part of town out with reversing signals or reversing lanes or whatever. I never have felt like we have a citywide plan where the Department of Transportation really has taken a lead in evacuation. And I really feel like Department of Transportation needs to take particularly an active role in the Harbor area in terms of an evacuation plan if something were to happen. So, I would love for you to really take a look at that. The other thing, so many traffic issues, I will tell you, one of the things, I've got great respect for some of the Harbor area staff in Department of Transportation. I think I told you that.
Yes.
I share, Ms. Perry, the same concerns that you had. And when I came into office, I had to attend two funerals, one of an eight-year-old, one of a nine-year-old, for a hit-and-run in a very short time in the Harbor area. A community task force group was set up by my office. And they identified intersections where accidents are waiting to happen. And we sort of all know where those are, and I think our neighborhoods know where they're all. And I will tell you, they came up with a list of places for stop signs, traffic signals, flashing lights, that the Department of Transportation really responded to quickly and effectively. And it was one of the better programs that I have seen happen. And I want to congratulate the staff for working so aggressively with the neighborhood. And it should be a model to other neighborhoods in terms of how we really aggressively attacked what we thought were dangerous intersections. The final thing that I want to make you aware of is, for me, I have a lot of enforcement issues, particularly parking enforcement issues. And I feel like all the parking enforcement officers have been hired since the freeze has been lifted. And we haven't seen any extras in the Harbor area. And I would love for you to take a look at that. Particularly, one of the new ordinances that may be coming online in the city of Los Angeles is RV parking. And we're going to be very aggressive about an ordinance that I think will prohibit RVs from parking on the streets overnight.
Yes.
But that is only going to work if we have enforcement officers. And to have a skeleton crew at night, particularly in the Harbor area, I think is going to be really counterproductive to us taking a stand against something that I think is a huge public safety issue, which is the storing of these oversized vehicles on our streets. So, those are sort of three things I wanted to touch on today, and I really look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember, if I could, respond to a couple of the issues that you raised. There is actually good news on the enforcement element. One of the things we've looked at and are proposing in our budget that starts July 1 is the hiring of additional personnel. We've also taken a look at our current situation, and we're actually going to have a class, we are actually going to schedule a class to train, to do the hiring training and have them ready to start work, and hope to have that completed so that we will have a significant number of new officers ready to begin July 1 of this year. So, you should be seeing a change in a couple of months.
Good. Hopefully, they're going to be in the Harbor area.
Among other places in the city, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. How are you? One thing I'd like you to comment on, and it was something you made a point in the committee, is your background in planning. And if you could just kind of give us a thumbnail on what that encompasses and your educational achievements in the planning area.
My background in planning is as extensive as mine in engineering. I have a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Michigan. I have served as an adjunct professor at both Michigan State University and the University of Michigan in transportation planning. In addition to that, I have served as the head of transportation planning for the State of Michigan Department of Transportation with responsibility for the entire state. In Michigan, that's a fairly unique perspective in that, yes, we have lots of vehicles in Michigan, but our vehicles are not only automobiles and trucks, but anything that moves, we have responsibility for. Michigan is surrounded on three sides by water, so we were concerned with marine transportation. We had responsibility for 83 county airports. We also had responsibilities for an extensive system of bikeways and horse paths. And then, interestingly enough, in addition to those, we also had responsibilities that dealt with the operation of a five-mile-long suspension bridge that connects the two peninsulas in Michigan. So, in that respect, we were responsible for planning and coordinating at a statewide level. We have 13 metropolitan areas in the state of Michigan. Each of them like the city of Los Angeles, unique in their geography, unique in their populations, unique in their needs, and pulling together a coordinated system that worked for them was part of my responsibilities. In addition to that, I have served at the national level as the Chair of the American Planning Association's Transportation Planning Division, in which we engaged in sharing of information and setting of standards for not only US-based transportation planning at both the government level and within the private sector, but we had international members as well.
You know, the reason I ask you that, and we touched on it briefly in the committee, is that we hear these terms like "transportation corridors", but sometimes that just means the vehicle is going down the street as opposed to looking at the other aspects of housing or mixed use or businesses, so that we're actually developing that corridor. And the issue that I'm most concerned with, and I don't believe that MTA has given it as much consideration as they should, is that we're going to have a $640 million rail system go down the right-of-way of Exposition. Well, if we're truly going to entice people to get out of their cars and ride that train that connects them throughout that network, we're going to have to begin to think about how the flower and how Exposition Boulevard are redesigned so that when we build in the future, that we're putting density on those, on that right-of-way, or close to the right-of-way. And we're also providing parking so people can gain access to that vehicle in their ability to leave their car close to their home. And so, I'd hope as you begin to look at how that's going to impact the city, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 miles as it gets to Culver City, that we begin to look beyond just if the train successfully can go down the right-of-way. The other issue that I'd hope that you be sensitive to is that the issue of a master plan for the area of the city south of the Santa Monica Freeway. If you look at the earmarked money on the last safety lieu allocations to the city, most of the money that's impacting the city valley, not the surrounding county, but the city, is all north of the freeway. And our assumption is, is that possibly we did not have a plan in place to begin to produce or at least highlight some of the needs for the southern part of the city, of the southern region. And so, we're hopeful, and there was a motion that we put for several weeks ago, to talk about how we might be prepared in '09 when the next safety lieu earmarking or funding may be forthcoming. And so, those are the kind of issues that really impact the southern part of the city. Some of it is probably the older part of the city, the poorer part of the city, that is already built out. And so, it's sometimes more difficult for people to begin to envision these transportation corridors because they're just dealing with what's there. But we're going to have to begin to look at widening streets, pushing back the business community in the alley areas, and even at some instances, taking some, possibly some homes, so that we have a corridor that businesses can thrive and the traffic can get down. But right now, with narrow streets, one and a half lane, we have no expectation of our rapid buses working properly or even a dedicated lane for some of our major thoroughfares. And so, those are the kind of issues in the planning that I would like you to be sensitive to as you take on the 1 million other things that you're going to be asked to do. But again, we have a great opportunity with the Expo line to create a real transportation corridor if we attack it in the right way.
We will definitely be looking at those, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Gloria, I think what you've heard today is quality of life issues that impact every single council district, and that the details matter. We've talked about as well, and I'm not sure if Mr. Reyes, but Reyes has talked about this before, the dash system, which we've talked about frequently, and the importance of looking to the future. I know we have some fiscal challenges in getting as many dash buses up, but the importance of creating a seamless system. And particularly in some districts, those dash systems are really the only kind of public transportation they have that can get them from point A to point B. I think the only other, several of our colleagues mentioned whether it be a stoplight or a speed hump or speed. And sometimes the decisions are made based on accidents, and you and I talked about this in one of our meetings, based on accidents that have happened versus accidents that almost happened, and how dangerous it is, and that our community members oftentimes do know the impact of those kinds of potential accidents and to take that into consideration. So, I'm just looking forward to your leadership as the head of the Department of Transportation and working with all of our colleagues, and welcome aboard. You've already rolled up your sleeves and hit the ground running, so congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge would want to speak as well.
Yeah, Ms. Gruel, thank you. I apologize. I miss punching the number, but I appreciate your leadership, Ms. Gruel, on transportation. And Gloria, welcome to Los Angeles again. It was great. I believe we should have parades in Los Angeles. I like parades. But you've got to have a little somebody work on the parades because sometimes the parades get people a little excited about the inconvenience. But I think it's good to have a parade, not have a parade for you because you're going to help us solve this problem. When you open remarks, I just want to accent it, your field offices are key and important. The way they work with council offices and the community are very key and important. I know we had a chance to meet. I think it just really focus on that and be a reality. This is a sign. That's one work order. Don't put it in the same line as you have to say whether there should be a new signalization, a trillight or a stop sign or some other engineering. That's different. So, they could focus on those two differently. They get bogged down with that. Empower them to speak for you and the department. Next to our public safety, transportation is the number-one issue. How many people in this council chamber have been a victim of crime in Los Angeles last year? Raise your hand. We've got one right over here, two right there. How many have been impacted by traffic in Los Angeles last 24 hours? Everybody. So, they're all waving their hands saying, "Gloria, come save us." So, it's a big job.
Yes, it is.
But putting those people and empowering them to that is very key. I have a motion coming in that's going to Ms. Gruel's office. The parking administrator's been vacant. Used to be an office right over in Piper Tech, fourth floor, next to the city archives, down the hall from where the air support is. There's got to be a parking administrator to be able to focus on the needs of parking in Los Angeles. Very key to that. And also, I ask, and again in committee, that we have a city commission on highways, freeways as well, to advocate for Los Angeles. There was others, and Ms. Gruel, you were very involved in that effort, in the 405 issue of the carpooling. But we should have a citizens' commission that says, "We're going to focus on streets and highways. Big traffic on big streets and save the neighborhoods." There's a Pauline Chan, who's a superstar over in your office. She does great work in the community. Brian Gallagher does great work in the community, too, and many other people as well do that work in the community. So, I just wanted to stress the community aspect of it, you know, to be able to move on it. I think what Ms. Han said is very important, to make sure that Jimmy Price's crews are fully funded and they're hired, and they're out there enforcing the law to make the streets safer. And I know Mr. Rosendall spoke about synchronized lights. And I said, "You've got to have synchronized lights, but you also have synchronized drivers." And that means that if you're going the speed limit, you're going to be able to merge. If you're going 45 or 50, you're not going to be able to merge. There'll be more accidents. And there's nothing worse than an accident. So, we all got to educate, the three Es: enforcement, education, and engineering. Thank you so much. Welcome to Los Angeles. And I look forward to taking a drive with you in my district to show you how we can make Los Angeles move safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge, that's our final speaker. So, the moment you've been waiting for, Ms. Jeff, you can please open the roll. been waiting for, Ms. Jeff, you can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the nomination.
Twelve ayes.
You are confirmed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Item thirty-seven was called special by Councilmember Weezer. Uh, excuse me, Councilman Cardenas.
Uh, Councilman Cardenas, we have item number thirty-seven. Is Mr. Cardenas here? Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Why don't we go to the next item?
Item forty-two was held for Councilmember Weezer.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, we have item number forty-two before us. We have had a public hearing on the item, but there are a number of cards. It would require a council motion to reopen that hearing. Just as a point of information, we have four, five, about ten cards, but I'd like to recognize you for comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Here we have a four-single-family drawing that was proposed for the area in the Glassell Park, Mount Washington area, northeast Los Angeles, where we have some very narrow roads, and concerns about the ability for emergency vehicles to co-op and access some of these areas in case of emergency. I ask that my colleagues support the upholding of the appeal filed by the Hillside Environmental and Safety Coalition. I am concerned, as they are, with the cumulative vehicle traffic impacts that this project may have, along with others. And I fully understand that there needs to be a, more analysis done on the cumulative impact of the various projects being proposed for this area, not only on traffic, but on other environmental issues. So I ask respectfully that my colleagues support the appeal and support this item as proposed by the Plum Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Or to open the public hearing? If not, let's open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item. I'm sorry, did you, oh, you did want to open. Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration of that, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, can I request a motion for a public comment on this item?
Okay. For how long, Mr. Weezer? We've got ten cards.
Ten minutes.
Okay, for ten minutes. We'll try to, we'll set the clock at one minute. Our apologies to folks for not being able to do further, though there has been the legal public hearing in previous committee meetings. So with that, I'd like to invite Ann Schirmerhorn forward, followed by Betsy Mines, and Chilton Alfons. Those will be our first three speakers for one minute. And before we start, the city attorney would like to say something. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is just a reminder to council members that this is a fair hearing matter, requiring heightened attention of the council members, either to the podium or to their screens at their desk.
Ms. Berry, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, this is a semi-judicial hearing, so if we could make sure that everybody is in their seats and listening closely. Please, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Ann Schirmerhorn. Thank you for having us here. I apologize if you don't all have one of those. There is eleven circulating in the city, and then there is eleven red, and there will be eleven green soon. Our work has been extensive, and the reason being is we have development in our area, which is fantastic. Our houses have doubled. It's great. But we're stuck. We're completely stuck. We can't move. Sometime we're stuck for hours. We have accidents. The fire truck can't come up. We had an accident as late as last week. They had to park at the bottom of the hill and run up with their gurney, believe it or not. That's the way it works. So we're here so we can take action towards our street, our circulation, and we can match planning with circulation. That's the key word, is matching them. It doesn't match. We have all those houses coming up, and at the same time, nothing is being done about the roads. So we're asking you to please go for whatever the Plum asks you to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Betsy Mines? Welcome, Betsy.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Betsy Mines. I live at 2327 Yorkshire Drive, just down or up the hill from the proposed four homes to be built, and I would urge you to support the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chilton Alfons, and Margaret Pianne will be our next speaker.
Yes, let me begin by apologizing to you, Mr. Reyes, for any inappropriate comments that were made towards you by part of the group. Now, first of all, I'd like to say that this thing went through Planning Committee and was passed, and the man has already spent $400,000 to build the homes. Now you come with an appeal to stop him. What about the losses he's faced? It's not fair. We're talking about four homes, not twenty or thirty homes, four homes. So we're asking for a no vote on the appeal. Let the man go through. I mean, you, I mean, he's put a lot of money into this. First, the Planning Committee says yes, and now you say no. It's not fair.
Thank you very much, sir. Margaret Pianne. And Helene Schbach will be our next. Helene, excuse me, Schbach, please.
Good morning. I live on Moss Avenue. My property backs on Yorkshire Drive across from the properties in question, and I'm just here to say thank you, and I urge you to adopt the Planning and Land Use Management Committee's findings. The MND that the zoning administrator used to approve this project is erroneous. There are a couple of, at least two points. The fact that it's in a brushfire area, and it says that it is not, and it says that no traffic will be impacted. I live at an intersection where all the construction vehicles must go by my house, front and back, and I can tell you clearly, there is a great impact on traffic from the building of just one home on that hillside, let alone the four that are discussed right here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Helene Schbach, followed by George Brockman.
Good morning, council members, council president. My name's Helene Schbach. I live in Glassell Park. I especially want to thank the Plum Committee for its consideration. One of the means by which we felt we could bring this forward was through Mahia versus City of Los Angeles. We felt this was a very similar incidence, where a community had provided fair argument for questioning the thresholds in SEQA. The Glassell Park community has been concerned that as we grow in the housing stockpiles, and that the infrastructure is in place to support safe access into and out of the hillsides. Along with that, in this particular case, determinations were made that created a self-setting precedent with the RE-20 zones when it was decided to treat them as R-1. So when determinations that define spirit and intent of our plans and ordinances are so clearly subjective, it's important that we resort back to the letter of the documents, and I think a new EIR can support more objective determinations and take into account quantitative and qualitative conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George Brockman, and then Alisa Smith.
Good morning, council members, council president. I'd like to thank Councilmember Weezer and Councilmember Reyes for bringing this before the city council. I think this problem in the northeast hills really needs to be looked at by government. It's not working, the current system of trying to make builders pay for infrastructure that's eighty years old. You really need to take a look at this. It is a public safety issue. Our streets were built in the twenties. There, many of them are not wide enough for two cars to pass, and we really need government to help us out here, and that's why it's really important that you are considering this, and I thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much. Alisa Smith, followed by Dr. Paul, I think it's Bagassau, I'm not sure how to pronounce it.
Hi, thank you. I've been a community member of Glassell Park for five years, and in northeast Los Angeles for sixteen years, and I've worked in many aspects with the Department of Planning. I was honored to be part of the Community Advisory Committee to establish a CDO for Glassell Park and Cypress Park, and I had the privilege of working with my other committed neighbors and the Department of Planning, and I can tell you that I learned a lot during that year about creating guidelines that will respect the existing residents and encourage new development. I can tell you, it's not easy to find reasonable solutions to often conflicting desires. Mostly, I learned what you know, that to build a city, no one person can do it alone, and that's why we have laws and ordinances. And I think we're lucky to have SEQA. They act as checks and balances to promote thoughtful, sustainable growth. I believe the MND for this case was rubber stamped by an overworked planning department. I don't blame them. You know this. You know they're understaffed, and their leadership has been, can we call it nebulous? So I ask you to please support HESC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul? Oh, it's Paul La. I see that. Sorry, Paul.
It is Paul La. Sorry. The last name is Bagassau.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been pronounced many ways over time. I have spoken here before about private property rights, and I wanted to share with you, I feel that maybe some of the council people feel that some of us have been, if not appearing to be disrespectful in our approach to protecting our property rights. A little bit of background, I came from an immigrant family. My father, Benjamin Bagassau, which Eric Garcetti actually memorialized at his death two years ago at this council meeting, was one of four brothers, Bagassau, from a small town in the northern part of the Philippines, who with the father of Royal Morales from Little Filipino Town, established the Filipino community. My father went to the war, became a citizen from World War II from the very beginning. He married my mother, who is not Filipino, she's white. They could not get married in the city of Los Angeles because of anti-miscegenation laws. This is what I grew up with. They could not buy a house in Los Angeles when they could finally get the money together in the late forties. We are being violated in our private property rights, and since we had immigration rallies last week, most of the immigrants are the ones who are trying to protect their rights. And if you can look at this group here, we are not part of the discussion. We're immigrants. We're protecting our property rights in the same spirit as the rallies last week. My deepest apology is, my father would be horrified to think that I had to continue to fight in 2006, and I am a property lot owner, and I plan to build. Thank you very much. This immigrant followed the rules. My father followed the rules. Approving the appeal is saying that immigrants...
I could ask you to conclude.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for memorializing my dad, who died at ninety-four, two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Thomas Osinski, followed by Otto Rose.
Oops. Hello, my name is Thomas Osinski. I'm an architect and resident of Mount Washington. In my everyday practice of designing houses, some of them in hillside, this is what I follow, and it's just part of it. There's much more than that. This is building code and zoning code. This is what we adhere to. This is the law that we have to follow. My knowledge is that the project that is in discussion followed those laws. At the end, when the project was approved by authority given to the city, given to this council, given to the administrative branch of the city, this thing has been appealed. If you approve that appeal, that means all the law that was created over eight years and is contained in those books becomes a garbage. So if, I guess the only thing to do is later on will be just to hire the lawyers and talk to neighbors. If we're going to go back that way, then, you know, it's your choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Otto Rose?
Hi, my name is actually Mark Simodiak. Otto asked me to speak in his place. I'm the co-chair of Pro LA, and unfortunately Bradley, the chair of Pro LA, was unable to attend today, so I'm speaking in his place as well. We believe that the council members should deny the appeal in order to, because the appeal does not provide specific environmental impact violations. The appeal was filed a year and a half after the environmental MND was published, and the private property owners have met the burden for their right to develop their property and are being deprived of that right by this frivolous appeal. We believe that the council members should deny the appeal so that the, to show that the Los Angeles Planning Department has authority over their decision-making capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three additional cards. Bobby Glanton Smith, Godwin, and sorry, can't read the writing there, and Jovan. Mr. Smith?
Good morning. My name is Bobby Glanton Smith. I work with organizations called Recycling Black Dollars, and it's been brought to my attention that this particular issue is challenging the process in which we plan and decide who gets to build what and under what circumstances. And I think it's important that this council looks at the process and the people that we hire to govern over these situations in such a way that developers really understand what their rights are and what the procedures are in such a way that it's handled very efficiently, and it doesn't provide a burden to those people who have taken the risk to build in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Godwin?
My name is Godwin Iwunze, and I own property in this area. I am here to seek, to explain to you guys that this is a frivolous appeal. It is a frivolous appeal in the sense that it was filed a year and a half after the planning department, which has authority to regulate the way planning is governed in this area. These same very individuals have appealed every sort of case that have come before them in this area, and if this continues, it is going to go around in the ten districts, eight districts, the same group of folks. So I am pleading to this council to deny this appeal. Deny it. It's untimely. It's frivolous. Let's rely on the judgment, on the people that have been appointed, that are educated to make this decision, which is planning department. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jovan?
My name is Jovan Katsman. I own some property up there in Glassell Park, 3746 Richardson Drive. My question to this council is, how four houses can be significant impact on your environmental issues in this area? On the other side, this appeal was filed a year and a half after knowledgeable people from City of Los Angeles issued MND for this property and for this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weezer or Mr. Reyes. Who would like to go first? Herr, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, council. Again, I ask that we support the decision by Plum. This issue here is one where we want to make sure that a full analysis is made of the traffic impacts and the cumulative impacts there is when we continue to develop on those areas that have very narrow streets and pose health and safety issues when we're not fulfilling our obligation on the infrastructure side. So again, council members, I urge you to support the decision by the Plum Committee to support the appeal. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, okay. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I want to support that issue of the Plum Committee. I just want to say one of our biggest challenges in Los Angeles now is every parcel of land's going to be called on to be built on. So we've got to do the right thing, and that's what this is all about, doing the right thing. But every piece of land, wherever it is, and there's a fellow named John Quigley. Anybody know who John Quigley was? He sat at Oak Tree out there in Santa Clarita. Remember the guy who sat in Oak Tree for seventy-one days? And I use that as a bellwether, if you could call it that, that that's a point of reference. Not that it's going to stop the urban sprawl that has affected us for two, I know you had a little celebration yesterday of the city's incorporation, but really, it's this September when we celebrate the 225th anniversary of the founding of the pueblo. But all of a sudden, the sprawl's going to stop, and what's happening to the great old neighborhoods that everybody forgot about, they kind of start discovering. And you can't come in and build those neighborhoods without building the infrastructure. And someone mentioned about the partnership that needs to be there. And I love my man, Mr. Smith, who sometimes when we talk about the issues of the city, he's a big Valley man. I'm half a Valley man and half a city man. But we talked about the storm last year, and you kind of made it through okay. And I was concerned about his district. My district's an old district. Laurel Canyon, which is now changed because the hillside grade and the narrow streets, is impacted. Why? Because the infrastructure was built the last forty years in Mr. Smith's district. Planning, much appropriate. I know you did a lot of work on that when you worked for Mr. Bernson. But in our old neighborhoods, and my mother was born in Lincoln Heights, and I, a northern Leaguer, went to Marshall High, so I know your neighborhoods. Well, my first jobs with the city were in that area. Were very narrow, narrow streets. And the only narrowest streets are like Laurel Canyon, you know, where the, that are as bad as this here. So this starts the question, because every parcel's going to be asked to be built on. We've just got to do it right. And then I think, as Mr. Reyes said, we've got to build them, as you've spoken, Mr. Jeff, near transit, near organizations. We've got to save and preserve neighborhoods, because I think that's what's the beauty of Los Angeles. But at the same time, we've got to build appropriately where it is. But at the same time, we gotta build appropriately where it is. And also, we know we gotta be in shape because they're coming at us all over because Mr. Quigley raised the flag and said, "We can't do it anymore." So you got this implosion coming back into the center part of the city. Lastly, in closing, I remember taking the council general from Germany to lunch one time at Nick's Cafe. Anybody eat at Nick's out there on Spring Street, right by the cornfields? And it was such a beautiful view because all the hills of Allegiant Park, of El Cerrino, of Lincoln Heights and of Highland Park were all green. And then the Angeles were snowcapped. And he felt that he was in the southern part of Germany looking at the Alps. It was so impressive. That's something I hope we could keep, some areas of our neighborhoods where those green hills open and free because they're part of our community, they're part of Los Angeles. So Mr. Weisar, thank you for your leadership on this and Mr. Reyes, thank you. We do have a challenge because everything's gonna be called upon, we just gotta do it right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Ms. President. Let me just ask the chair, I'm not clear on the comments that were made today as to the year and a half delay and whether we gave them, or at least the builder, an idea that they were moving forward and if this is after the fact. I'm not clear on that judgment, what your perspective is.
The application that was made asked for a build of residential, a residential area. The planning department, because of backlog, took about a year and a half to get to their conclusion. By the time I got to it, my committee, it was already a year and a half. At that point, the committee weighed the case and based on the facts that were given to us, especially the lack of capacity, infrastructure, the decision was made that essentially reflects the priorities of the council member and the committee in trying to establish an infrastructure that will accept the kind of impact that's being imposed upon the area given the proposed project. So it was a year and a half of backlog and we finally got the case to committee because of the amount of time it takes for the analysis to occur within the planning process.
Clarify one thing for me. That year and a half, if I understood it, did they start the work and begin to proceed or was it just a year and a half and there's no work been done?
When you say work--
I mean, work in the sense of the developer putting down funds for the project in which was being--
My understanding is they were doing the application process, the pre-development work, in terms of trying to get the entitlements of that work is what I think you're referring to.
Yeah. So the thing is, the cost and the issues of what they went forward would be no different than any other project, so it's not--
Exactly.
The building is not being built and we're stopping it. It's the process that's expected before we get to the point of approval.
Exactly. It's the pre-development process for entitlements to get the clearances to start construction. That's the focus of this work, pre-development work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing no one else on the speaker queue, Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. If you would, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item has been approved. Colleagues, as you see, we only have 10 members present. Bear quorum, so I ask that everyone please stay in the council chambers. I'd like to now go back, I think, to item number 37. Mr. Cardenas, you called that special.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to talk to, get the staff up front that had to do with the selection process here. This has to do with those firms that are gonna be handling the bonds. Hi. Anybody else we're waiting for?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. How often do we go through this routine of actually pulling together these bond financing teams? That you're aware of? How often do we go through this process of putting together these bond financing teams? Is it once every 10 years? Is it once a year? Is it several times a year? My time, please.
Every three years.
Every three years?
Yes.
For this, for this department?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, when you put together this team, they're gonna be the team that we rely on, the team that's gonna be handling bonds for the subsequent three years?
Correct.
And possibly longer if we give them some kind of extension, because that could happen, right?
Not longer, three years. Every three years, we have to go through this process. Actually, the contracts are for one year and they're renewable for additional two more years.
Okay. So basically, we could do this once every year if we didn't, weren't happy with the team or what have you?
Correct.
Or if the situation changed dramatically, then we would actually go out once a year?
Yes.
Okay. How big was the pool of applicants or people who are firms that were vying for this business? We've narrowed it down to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different firms, providing different services, but the team is now nine firms. How many firms were in the pool?
19. There were 19 applicants, yes.
There were 19 firms. And how many of those firms are actually local firms headquartered, either in the city of Los Angeles, county of Los Angeles, or even California?
Most of them in California, all of them actually in California.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Really? Bank of New York?
They have local offices here?
No, I didn't say have local offices--
I'm sorry.
Headquartered. Headquartered.
I cannot answer that question, I have to look into it.
Okay. Because Merrill Lynch and Bank of New York, I would imagine, have offices here but are not headquartered here. What was the percent of local and/or women or minority-owned businesses that were originally in the 19 firms, the actual pool?
There were three minority groups that they applied for this RFQs.
So out of 19, there were three?
There were three, yes.
How many of them were local businesses?
Local in California?
Yeah.
I would like to say all of them.
No. Headquartered.
Of course. Again, I have to look into that, but I know definitely two of them, they're headquartered in California.
Okay, so you basically can't answer the question about how many of those 19 were actually headquartered in California? You can't answer--
I have to get back to you on that.
Okay, you'll have to get back to me. Members, I'm just getting started on this issue and it's very unfortunate that we are handling millions and millions of dollars in bonds from various departments, totally billions of dollars of bonds every single year. And yet, the actual body that's charged with making the final decisions here, we don't have the detailed information to find out whether or not the spirit in which we claim to want to do business in this city is even adhered to. So I request, members, that we put this item over until we can get these questions answered before the public. I think the public deserves to know, this is their money. I think this council deserves to spend much more attention to this because ultimately, should one of these firms do something wrong, for God's sakes, Merrill Lynch is very famous, very famous, for causing a lot of problems just south of us. So I think it's very important that we start paying more attention to this issue. And I personally don't feel that the questions have been answered enough for us to make an educated and to have the proper understanding of what we're actually doing on this matter.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Ms. President. I wanted to just stand and support Mr. Cardenas' concern about this. I think he and I have kind of wrote on this issue collectively about local businesses, headquartered businesses. And as I remind each time we come before one of our committees, that our ID card says city of LA, yet we have an insistence on sending so much of our bond business to New York. And when we talk to some of our local bond dealers, they say if they applied for a deal in New York, they're labeled as a foreign company. Yet we, and most of our deals are picking companies in Chicago, New York, and very little business in California on California debt. And so I do think that we have to look at how we address that. And I'm pleased that Mr. Cardenas has pushed forward on the ad hoc committee to talk about how we can create bond debt policies for the city. We've gotten some information from other cities in which there is a mandate to have local participation, a mandate for small companies, a mandate to provide the ability to grow some of these smaller companies into big companies or medium-sized companies over time. And the only way to do that is to give them the business. And if some of our local companies can do 300, 400, 500 million dollars in Texas and Chicago, they certainly can do it here in Los Angeles. And so I would support that we hold this over and evaluate it and really look at a way in which we make sure that when we are making a committed decision to go into debt, that we ensure that the people who pay our business taxes, pay our city sales taxes, employ people in the city of Los Angeles are the ones that we're giving consideration on these types of commitments. And so I applaud you in pushing forward on that.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you. If we have this matter back before us next Wednesday, would that be enough time to answer the questions that you weren't able to satisfy today?
If that was the only question, yes, we can answer that.
Okay. Well, be prepared to answer the questions of how are we advertising? Where are we advertising? What kind of responses have we been getting? Are we getting the same firms over and over? Are there firms registered within these categories that are headquartered in California, in Los Angeles, in LA County? Have they been responding or not responding? If you need more than a week, you let us know. Is there something gonna happen if we don't approve this within the next few weeks?
Next few weeks, we can do by, but I just want to share one information, if I may--
Sure.
--that LAHG was working very closely with Councilman Parks' office regarding this outreach process. We did receive written instructions from that office. We followed to the letter all those instructions and based on that process, we came with this list. Basically, I just want to share with you that we did everything possibly that was asked from us to do so.
That's great. It sounds like we're making progress. Sounds like we've done it a little differently.
We'll work with housing and ensure your concerns are answered. In addition, I'd like to bring some clarity to the fact that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about local firms or smaller firms. It should be recognized that only the, what we characterize as large houses, the large companies, actually trade here in LA. Some of the local firms you're referring to, who may have an office here, actually trade on the New York market. The large firms who trade here in LA are paying our business taxes here in LA. So I want to make that distinction. And the one thing that, I absolutely understand and respect your concerns, when it comes to managing the city's debt, we put blinders on. And our principal focus is to ensure we get the best deal for the city and the best interest rate for the city. And with that, to ensure that, you know, the people we serve are paying, are getting the biggest bang for their buck. And so we're doing that. But we recognize the importance of having, you know, the local agencies. Some of these agencies who are making the most noise, the principal office, one in particular, his office is in San Francisco, but trades up in the New York office, does not trade in the LA office. And so I hope that when we do have this discussion, that those who are making the most noise could be honest and forthright about how they trade and when they trade.
Well, you know what? I'm glad you made that last comment, Mr. Fujioka, because I'm gonna clarify something. The people making the noise are the council members. I am not responding to any particular company, I'm not responding to any particular organization, I'm responding to what I feel is my responsibility as an elected council member in this city.
Oh, I would never question that. And please--
No, no, no. You didn't question that, but-- You did allude to the fact that there are some organizations or firms out there that may be catching our attention, who would like us to have this discussion. And I know that you agree that this, you're open and you welcome this discussion--
Oh, absolutely.
But you welcome, actually, what you just said right now is you welcome a forthright, honest discussion about who's doing what, who's where, and who's local, who's not, et cetera. And I welcome that as well. I'm looking forward to it. I can't wait. But one thing that I want to make sure that everybody understands, there's a difference between a multi-billion dollar firm that has their headquarters in New York, but has more people working out of an office here in Los Angeles than a firm that is based here. Their headquarters are here. As a matter of fact, Mr. Fujioka, if you would like to bring that with you next time when we have this discussion, can you actually remind the city of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, about the statistics that show where a firm is headquartered has a lot to do with where the majority of their philanthropic giving and wealth back into the community, investment in the community goes? Based on the firm's headquarters. And we've heard it over and over, Mr. Fujioka, and you know as well. Arco used to be headquartered here. Let's just look at the statistics of BP, that now owns Arco, and look at where they're investing their philanthropic dollars, what communities are benefiting from their wealth when it comes to putting back into the community. So the number of employees doesn't necessarily translate as well as where they're headquartered.
I understand. And conversely, some folks are saying, "Well, local this and local that." I would also like to see, in a relative context, the same benefit being provided by a local firm. And some firms that-- Well, I think we do need to have this conversation, but please, I would never, ever question--
No, I'd like to clarify--
--where you're going at, but I understand--
You never questioned where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
But you did bring to the table, and rightfully so. There are some firms out there that want to get attention or what have you. Let them be forthright, let them come to the table, and then let them be forthright about where they're coming from and what they're saying and whether or not it's true.
Yeah.
Be they New York firms, local firms, or what have you. For example, I talked to somebody the other day who used to work for one of the big, huge firms in New York. And one of their bylines, one of their selling lines, when they used to talk to staff at organizations and cities and municipalities around this country, they used to say, "Nobody ever got fired by hiring us." A little inference there about, "You don't want to go with these smaller guys, you don't want to go with these upstarts, you don't want to go with these people who aren't as big as us." Trying to insinuate to somebody, "You ought to be worried about your job. Don't worry about what's fair. We can handle the business." You don't even need to consider those other folks. It's that kind of rhetoric that happens. Mr. Fujioka, we are creatures of habit. We are human beings, we are not computers.
I understand.
So the bottom line is, what we want to do, I think, in spirit of this council from here forward, is to have these kinds of discussions in committee preferably, and if necessary, here on the full council, in full view of the public, with on public record to find out what we're doing with these billions of dollars and who we're entrusting to do that. Again, Merrill Lynch is on this list and they're very, very famous about a municipality just down the road from us, that they had a lot to do with putting them in hot water, with the people's money. And another thing I'd like to ask--
I understand--
I'm sorry, my time is up, but I'd like to ask you this question. How many times have you had this kind of discussion about these bond matters before this council in the last 10 years?
Well, the last three, much more frequently than we had in the prior seven.
Exactly.
And that's good. And then one thing I want to focus on is that, is to ensure, because we take great pride and we've made significant improvements, our office, in how we manage the city's debt. And even when you say Merrill Lynch, no one took a gun to the people's head down south and said, "Do these things." The ultimate responsibility was with that CAO's office--
Absolutely.
--and the people who managed the debt, and then from there, the elected officials. It would not happen in this city because of our, what's happened, the council we have, the merit we have, and, you know, just candidly speaking, you know, our office would not take us down that path. But I'd hope that when we do focus on these discussions, the focus is on, is absolutely on merit and who's the best qualified to serve the city.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You're absolutely right. I look forward to that. Hopefully, in the coming months, when we have more and more of these discussions, now that we have an ad hoc committee specifically focused on our bond financing and public financing in the city, hopefully it will be an opportunity for everybody to showcase that they are on top of it, they are taking care of business, and the people's money is in good stead.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends the discussion. This item will continue until next Wednesday, council meeting. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge our president, Mr. Garcetti, and Mayor Viergosa for a special introduction and presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think our special guests here in City Council needs no introduction, but please give a warm welcome to the former president of the USSR, a man who's won the Nobel Peace Prize and now is the president of the International Green Cross, the leading voice in environmental activism in the world, Mikhail Gorbachev. Please welcome. It gives me great honor to be able to welcome Mr. Gorbachev to council chambers. And you'll notice on your desks today that Ms. Perry and I have introduced a motion which builds on our history of international cooperation with the International Green Cross. They helped us write the legislative-- They helped us write the legislation for our city to make sure that every municipal building that we have is built in a green way with a LEED certification. They were an important voice in our Proposition O campaign for clean water, which Mr. Gorbachev has now made as a worldwide priority. And they continue to be a leading voice on global emissions and the work that this city and the city council has done to be one of the best cities anywhere in the world in reducing our global greenhouse emissions. Mr. Smith brought this up just recently when we were talking about trash in the city. Ms. Perry and her leadership on the Southern California Air Quality Management District Board, and each one of you, I think, have been leading voices in that. So we wanted to welcome Mr. Gorbachev here, thank him for his continuing activism. As I said just a moment ago, he started his life red. He is now ending it as green. And we embrace him as somebody who has been able to not only make an incredible impact in our world in terms of peace, but also in terms of the health of all citizens of this world. So with that, I'd like to introduce the mayor to say a few words. Ms. Perry may like to say something as well, and then we'll hear from President Gorbachev. Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's indeed an honor today to welcome President Gorbachev here to Los Angeles. He mentioned that he's been here many times. I believe it's the first time, though, that he's been here to address the council. And I had an opportunity to meet with him as well. And I think what we both agree on, and what we all agree on, I think, here on this council, knowing this body the way that I do, that we want to be the greenest and cleanest big city in America, that we want to lead the way, that at a time when the federal government has not moved ahead to sign and support the Kyoto Agreement, cities across the nation, some 200 mayors have signed an initiative to say that we want to move away from an overreliance on fossil fuels and address this issue of global warming. So it's indeed an honor for me to be here to greet and welcome President Gorbachev.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and I'm also pleased to stand here to greet Mr. Gorbachev and to say how grateful we are as a city for his visionary leadership in defining and raising the bar standard of what we can do as public servants in creating green opportunities, not only for the areas that we represent, but on a global basis. And his presence here signifies to me that indeed the world through global communication and electronic communication is indeed probably flat. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Let me be very brief, Mayor. I'd like to thank you for the invitation. I thank the mayor and the city council president for inviting me and also all of you for inviting me to your meeting. I have tremendous respect for the citizens of Los Angeles. I'm very familiar with your achievements and also with your problems. It is a great city, and it is very important that it is a source of very important environmental initiatives that it supports those initiatives. I would like to thank you all for this, to express my deep satisfaction with what you're doing on behalf of Green Cross International. The President of Green Cross International is here, the President of Global Green USA, our US branch is here. We are becoming allies in very important commitments. I know that today you will be adopting a resolution that endorses this cooperation. I will be sending a letter from Green Cross International to heads of G8 countries, which conveys our position on energy and water to the G8 summit. We are proposing an international convention that will provide the right of access to water, to safe water, for every citizen of our planet. Today, water is one of the most urgent problems in the world. We are speaking of hundreds of millions of people in the world, unfortunately, who are still being denied the right to have access to safe water and to basic sanitation. And as a result, we have all kinds of health, medical, and other problems. Unless we are all, unless we all of us commit ourselves to the resolution of this problem, it is entirely possible that in the coming years, as UN Secretary General Coffey-Annan has said, we will see wars for water. It is important that the convention that we are proposing will give the right to every citizen, to every person in the world, to demand access to safe water and to go to court if necessary to defend that right. A great deal needs to be done to address this problem and other environmental problems. And this is exactly what you are doing here in Los Angeles, and I would like to thank you for it.
Mr. Garcetti, some of our colleagues would like to say a few words. And I think after we have those, we'd like to take a group shot, if we may, here for the entire city council. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, and Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. President, you remind me a lot of our President Jimmy Carter, a person who, after he has been in leadership, is giving back tremendously to the whole planet. I applaud you for that. Jimmy Carter is a very good friend of mine. Secondly, I want to say that when you started the process of Glasnost with our President Reagan, the beginning of democracy in Eastern Europe and in Russia happened, and not a single bullet was flown between anybody. And I want to thank you for creating a climate on the planet that brought democracy to the former Soviet Union. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, welcome to the great city of the angels. And you stand where everyone stands, as the mayor has escorted you here with our President and Ms. Perry. Mr. Reagan, your friend, stood there 25 years ago when he was first elected to the President of the United States, when we had a reception in our city. That's a wonderful spot that you stand. So I'm just proud that you're here in the John Ferraro Chambers. I also say I'm very proud of you. I'm President of Sister Cities of Los Angeles, and St. Petersburg is our sister. So we have a special bond with St. Petersburg. And I just wanted to stand in the excitement thing. The beautiful thing of life is that after you complete one job, you do a greater job. And what a great job you did for your country, and now you do a great job for the world. And lastly, I have this loaf of pumpkin bread for you, okay? It's made by some nuns in a cloistered order underneath the Hollywood sign, and it's great stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
I would say that over the past 15 years, I've been coming to this country. I have seen that now in America, you have learned how to bake really good bread.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. President Gorbachev, I just want to say thank you on behalf of my children, our grandchildren of this great city, this great country. You are so right. Water is precious. We are now beginning to look at our regional watershed system. And as the mayor has indicated earlier, with his strong support, we are focused on the main spine, which is our Ali River, a river that I think symbolically reflects how modern times has treated our natural elements. We've encased in cement. We've destroyed that which gave us life as a city, our birthplace. And now, through the strong leadership of our President, Ad hoc River Committee, and all the grassroots communities are stepping up to figure out the best way to bring it back to life. And you, I believe, are the international symbol of making people realize that the climate that we've created, the warming of our atmosphere, the melting of our ice caps, and the economic catastrophe, the ecological catastrophe that is before us unless we do something to change it. And you, I believe, are playing a pivotal role in the history of mankind. So thank you so much for your presence and what you're doing for our future.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Kardanis.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome President Gorbachev to Los Angeles. And thank you for your leadership in Green Cross International. I represent a part of the city of Los Angeles, where the port of Los Angeles is, America's port. And I see David Freeman, the President of the Harbor Commission. We are challenged by keeping the international trade industry an important economic engine for all of the United States, but we're challenged by keeping the air and the water clean and safe. I am urging, and the city council unanimously passed a resolution urging our United States Senate to sign the international treaty, MARPALE Annex VI, which will limit the amount of sulfur emissions from the ships all over the world. And we would love for Green Cross International to urge the United States to sign that treaty along with 30 other countries in the world. And I really want to thank you for your leadership. You have granddaughters. I have granddaughters. And it is for them that we must finally keep this planet clean and green. And on the advice of Councilman Labange, if you have five minutes, go to the top of the city hall and look out over all the view, and you'll be able to see my district, San Pedro. And, yeah, we're, thank you, Tom. And it's a beautiful view from up there. We thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Kardanis.
Thank you very much. I feel compelled to share with you a story of a friend of mine who grew up here in California, was born in Mexico. He spoke Spanish and English, and he was a farm worker as a child. And he said that he looked up at the stars one day and said, I'm going to go there. And he is now an astronaut today, but I share this story with you because to become an astronaut, he chose to learn Russian. And he is now fluent in Russian as well. He reads it, he speaks it, because he thought, one day, I'm going to be up there in the stars with some Russian astronauts. Whether he does or does not ever end up in the stars with Russian astronauts, he has shared with me that his life is better and more fulfilling now that he has learned both the Russian culture and the language. And I share that with you because you've made this earth better, because you've decided to communicate with everybody in the world how important it is for us to value our precious water, for us to value our precious earth, and for us to value and know that we, as individuals, can make a difference, and we, as policymakers, need to make a difference. So I just want to thank you for coming to Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for inspiring us to do more and to be better than we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor and Mr. President. So pleased that you are here today, that you can see by the comments of our colleagues that this is a city that believes strongly in the environment and believes strongly that we're not an island in the world, and how important it is to have a relationship with the entire world. And you have shown how important it can be, like President Carter, that your role in the international scene can be incredible and can make a difference for the lives of our children and grandchildren. And so we thank you for that. We thank you also for Matt Peterson of Global Green, who we all work very closely with here in Los Angeles, to further the kinds of issues that have been discussed today. So welcome on behalf of all of us here in the city of Los Angeles. And would ask now, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, if we take, I know you have a presentation, then we'll take a picture.
Thank you very much. And just wanted to add to the gifts that you've gotten. The loaf of bread is tough to top, but we wanted to know that when you're not here in the city of Los Angeles, this book about the city of Los Angeles will keep you close even when you are far away. So thank you for gracing us again with your presence, and welcome back here anytime in the city of angels. Thank you. Should we take a photograph here with everybody?
Take a photograph. No, on the other end.
Shut the fuck up.
David, David. Wanna get a quick picture?
Yes. Yes.
David, David. Wanna get a quick picture?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you all very much, colleagues. Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please.
Item 52 was called special by Councilmember Parks, but I believe there's been a request to continue that two weeks to April 19th.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 52 for two weeks? If there is not, that will be ordered, and that day is...
April 19th.
April 19th. Okay, great. Next order of business?
And, Mr. President, there was a substitute motion submitted on item 72, but that's already been adopted. Do you wish to reconsider that?
Okay, let's reconsider item 72, or open the roll on that reconsideration, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, 72 is back before us. We now have a substitute motion that has been circulated.
That has.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on that substitute motion? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved as well. Next order of business?
There is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city has learned that HR 4437 and Senate Bill 2454 include provisions that would too broadly preempt the city's control over land use issues. Immediate action is required because of possible congressional action on these bills later this week. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on the findings? If nobody wishes to be heard on the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item's now before us. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. We move forward on this issue primarily, and it sort of clarified, it's not taking a position on either bill, but it's both bills, both in the Senate and the Congress, HR 4437 and the Senate Bill 2454 have language that appears to violate the whole principle of home rule. The reason we're interested in this is because we locally have an ordinance going through plum that makes it mandatory for our home improvement stores to mitigate the issues that they create outside of their boundaries. This appears to preempt that effort, which in my judgment is a land use local issue that these two pieces of legislation are attempting to prohibit us from having that discretion. And so, in moving on this item, because these issues are moving so quickly in Washington that I wanted to make sure that we were on record that on that segment of those two bills that we were in opposition to them in any other legislation that would prohibit the city of LA from having its just land use regulations and such that impact positively on the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that forth with, please. Okay.
66 and 73.
Sure, 66 and 73 we will also send forth with. Next special?
There is a special too, and the city attorney will also speak to those findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, IT and GS Committee yesterday was unable to finalize recommending action on the successor contracts for citywide communication services. The current contract with Verizon expires April 10th. Immediate action is required to execute a month-to-month supplemental contract with Verizon before Monday. That can be accomplished by continuing the motion to this Friday, assuming council first makes findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on the findings? If not, let's open the roll on the findings, to close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is now before us. Special two, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes. It's fortunate and unfortunate that we were contemplating a contract that needed to be given, and what happened was we found out through the IT Department that more information was coming forth, and therefore we have to, we had to postpone it from committee, and therefore we need more time in order for, to handle this properly and to give the proper respect to the actual current contractor and give us an opportunity as a city to address this matter and give an appropriate contract into the future. It's important that we pass this matter so that we can actually have the time to do that, and in this case, giving ourselves six months of month-to-month extensions.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, please prepare the roll. I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, on this item, Mr. President, we are requesting that that matter be continued over to Friday.
Oh, that's correct. Till the next meeting, we will do that, correct? My mistake, my apologies. If there's no objection to that, we will take this up at the next meeting that will be this Friday. And just to remind folks, that meeting will be in the Van Nuys City Hall, which is our first of the regularly scheduled meetings for this coming week, this week, excuse me, on Friday. So, if there's no objection, that will be continued. Any housekeeping?
Council has motions for posting referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests be excused Friday, June 30th for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused.
Desk is clear.
All right. Colleagues, we, just to remind everybody in terms of announcements, this Friday, April 7th, 2006, this Friday at 10:00 a.m., we will have our regular meeting, but it will be in the Van Nuys City Hall as we will be doing monthly. So, anybody who would like to show up here at City Hall to testify will be able to testify to Van Nuys via remote. So, if you are here and fill out a yellow speaker card in City Hall in the John Farrow Council chambers, we will be able to listen to you out in Van Nuys just as vice versa we are able today to listen to Van Nuys testify here downtown. So, we look forward to seeing many of you on Friday, April 7th, this Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we will be in recess the following Friday. On Good Friday, there will be no council meeting. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Another announcement, repeat on announcement, very important meeting, FBI Multicultural Advisory Committee will be meeting at Epic Center on Saturday, August 8th, 10:30 a.m., 1:00 p.m. Epic Center is 3980 South Menlo, and a variety of civil rights and law enforcement issues will be discussed. Also, the LAPD will have a recruitment car show program on the Sunday, April 9th, at Lemur Park, free admission, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's sponsored by their recruitment effort and primarily the car show by Southwest area. And then, the African-American Chamber will have its monthly meeting April 11th at 3910 West Martin Luther King Boulevard, Room 209. And they will have their guest speaker, California State Senator Joe Dunn from the 34th Senate District. And also, the final one is that the African-American Classical Musical Circle will have its first meeting Saturday, April 15th, 1 to 4, at Lucy Florence Restaurant, 3351 West 43rd Street in Lemur Park.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Does anybody have adjourning motions? Okay. I believe Mr. Labonge has an adjourning motion. Yes? So, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I just wanted to join yesterday in the tribute to Albert C. Martin and the wonderful work he did in this city as an architect. And I know Ms. Perry led in the journey, and I know we all adjourned in his memory. Many of his buildings were classic buildings that are still standards today, and his father worked on this building itself, the City Hall. Also, members, a very dear friend of many of us, just a great friend who was a leader, Eunice Chesler. For many, many years, she was the face of Paramount Pictures in the community, the Director of Government Affairs, Vice President of Government Affairs. She did many great things. One of the things that stand out foremost on, and brought that studio out into the community, where before there was just the walls as they separate the community. But in the '70s, in her work, and in the '80s, she also was the first one to lend a hand to AIDS Walk Los Angeles, where they gathered at Paramount Pictures for the first walk, and that was a big deal to have that on a studio, and it brought great attention to it. She was a very special friend to all. She's preceded by her husband, Henry, who just passed three months ago. And I know Jan is a dear friend of Eunice, and many of us are, and Henry, so ask we adjourn in memory of Eunice Chesler.
Thank you. All members will be on that. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Parks, and then Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three adjourning motions today. The first one, Everett Kelly, born in Illinois in 1922. His family moved to Los Angeles when he was just two years old. He's a graduate of Jefferson High School. Mr. Kelly, after four years in the military, was a 48-year employee of the Los Angeles Police Department, where he retired at least twice. He was a police officer and then later went to a station officer position. He passed away March 26, 2003, at the age of 84. He's survived by his wife, Marjorie. What makes Mr. Kelly kind of unique? He was the community relation, or the three-wheel motorcycle officer around my grade school at 34th and Central at St. Patrick's. Was probably the first contact, positive contact with the police department that I had. But also, would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of James Edward Lindsay, who was a plant manager at 59th Street School. He attended 109th Street School in Gompers, graduated from Fremont. He had a long military record and honorably discharged. He worked for LA Unified for 39 years, 27 of those he spent at 59th Street Elementary School, where he received many awards. Mr. Lindsay passed away March 19th. Funeral service to be held, were held on March 31st, and he survived by his wife Barbara with 44 years of marriage. And my final one is Amy Adele Wilson, born in December 1934 in Denver. She was the youngest of three children. She was a member of, in Los Angeles, of the Bryant Temple AME Church, became a very active member. She served as the president of the usher board. She was very distinguished and had a variety of professions and talents. She was a secretary, a computer operator, a legal assistant, a nurse, a dental hygienist. She also traveled on a number of her activities and served as a campaign director for Mayor Tom Bradley and Councilman Holden during their councilmatic campaigns. She retired from the Angeles Funeral Home where she was employed as a senior counselor. She was also, had a variety of community activities and organizations. She was a member of the Guys and Dolls Social and Charity Club, the American Business Women's Association, the Eastern Stars, NAACP, the Urban League. She's the past president, former vice president fundraising for the New Frontier Democratic Club, and the most recently, she was president of the Cherrywood Block Club Association, where she served as the community coordinator for the LA Marathon. Through the years, she received many awards, Woman of the Year for the 10th District Outstanding Community Service from the Los Angeles Police Department, recognized, recognition from civil service, also from USC, and many others. She's preceded death by her husband Lonny, who was a longtime community activist, and also, she survived by her sister and two children.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry, excuse me.
Yeah, second to Mr. Parks.
Second on that?
I also wanted to just add a few...
And Mr. Labonge, second on that one as well.
Okay. Add a few words about both Henry and Eunice Chesler, and they were both friends of ours and many people here. And I gotta say, Eunice was way ahead of her time. She was very gutsy, very direct, very, just a real woman in so many ways, and she really paved the way for the likes of us, and she took no prisoners in her heyday. And I always enjoyed watching her, you know, conduct her business, and she did it with a lot of style. And even though she, she worked in the very rough entertainment industry, she would always go home and be just a wonderful wife and a great, great mother and a great community person. She, after they retired, she and Henry just had such a tremendous time enjoying plays and opera and music and coming downtown and watching downtown change. And one of the last time, my, times I got to see them out together with their caregiver, they were out enjoying a special dance presentation at one of my community events, and I was just so thrilled to see them. And I mean, they were both over 80 at the time, and Henry was not well, and Eunice was there taking care of him and making sure that he was doing okay. And the life, the quality of life that they lived, especially towards the end of their lives, I think was vastly improved by the presence of their, not only physically but emotionally supportive caregiver who helped them maintain their lifeline to the outside world so that they could continue to live with assistance and to get out and enjoy the fruits of their labors. And so, you know, I want to say thank you. I think I'm sure I'll see her Sunday, April 9th, at 3 o'clock at Mount Sinai Memorial, located at 5950 Forest Lawn Drive. But condolences to the family and thanks to the caregiver. I think that's why it's so important that we remember the people who provide care for our family members because of the burden that it lifts from our shoulders so we can just enjoy them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gruehl?
To add my comments as well about Eunice. She was one of the first people to have that government affairs job in an entertainment industry, you know, in a, in a studio. It became a regular occurrence in many of the other studios, but Eunice really created that path, created a personality, an individual who I think all of us remember. I saw her so many times here in the city council chambers during the past, for me, last 20 years. She was someone who, who not only did her business in taking care of the company she represented, but I think as both Ms. Perry and Mr. Labonge have said, she was also very much community-minded. And I think she set the, really the stage and the bar very, very high for the importance of having a entity like Paramount be active in their community and support philanthropically, but also care about what happened in the neighborhoods. And so, she always had a smile on her face. She always told you what she really thought. And so, she will be sorely missed by so many individuals, and particularly those of us that had a chance to call her one of our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, we'll see you in Van Nuys on Friday. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, and Mr. Reyes has one announcement to make. Mr. Reyes, my apologies.
President.
We can, okay.
I'm over here. In coordination with my office, the Royal Arts Collective, this pleased to announce the Views of the River Art Inspired by the River has moved the City Hall Bridge Gallery for the month of April to celebrate Environmental Month, pretty appropriate with our President Gorbachev's visit. A reception for the artists opened to the public is scheduled for Thursday afternoon, April 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00. Reception is part of the Downtown Art Walk of Exhibition Vvenues in Downtown's Gallery Road District. That's held second Thursday of every month. Views of the River includes artwork by six local artists, paintings and model prints by Judith Amador, photography by Bill Johnson, paintings by Leo Limon, collaborative artwork of fiber-infused glass...
She was the youngest of three children. She was a member of, in Los Angeles, of the Bryant Temple A.M. Church, became a very active member. She served as the president of the usher board. She was very distinguished and had a variety of professions and talents. She was a secretary, a computer operator, a legal assistant, a nurse, a dental hygienist. She also traveled on a number of her activities and served as a campaign director for Mayor Tom Bradley and Councilman Holden during their councilmatic campaigns. She retired from the Angeles Funeral Home where she was employed as a senior counselor. She was also, had a variety of community activities and organizations. She was a member of the Guys and Dolls Social and Charity Club, the American Business Women's Association, the Eastern Stars, the NAACP, the Urban League. She's the past president, former vice president fundraising for the New Frontier Democratic Club, and the most recently, she was president of the Cherrywood Block Club Association, where she served as the community coordinator for the L.A. Marathon. Through the years, she received many awards, Woman of the Year for the Tenth District, Outstanding Community Service from the Los Angeles Police Department, recognized, recognition from civil service, also from USC and many others. She's preceded death by her husband Lonnie, who was a longtime community activist, and also she survived by her sister and two children.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Perry, Ms. Perry, excuse me.
Yeah, second to Mr. Parks.
Second on that?
I also wanted to just add a few...
And Mr. Labange, second on that one as well, okay?
Add a few words about both Henry and Eunice Chesler, and they were both friends of ours and many people here, and I gotta say, Eunice was way ahead of her time. She was very gutsy, very direct, very, just a real woman in so many ways, and she really paved the way for the likes of us, and she took no prisoners in her heyday. And I always enjoyed watching her, you know, conduct her business, and she did it with a lot of style, and, and even though she, she worked in the very rough entertainment industry, she would always go home and be just a wonderful wife and a great, great mother and a great community person. She, after they retired, she and Henry just had such a tremendous time enjoying plays and opera and music and coming downtown and watching downtown change, and one of the last time my, times I got to see them out together with their caregiver, they were out enjoying a special dance presentation at one of my community events, and I was just so thrilled to see them. And I mean, they were both over eighty at the time, and Henry was not well, and Eunice was, was there taking care of him and making sure that he was doing okay. And the life, the quality of life that they lived, especially towards the end of their lives, I think was vastly improved by the presence of their, not only physically but emotionally supportive caregiver, who helped them maintain their, their lifeline to the outside world so that they could continue to live with assistance and to get out and enjoy the fruits of their labors. And so, you know, I want to say thank you. I think I'm sure I'll see her Sunday, April the ninth, at three o'clock at Mount Sinai Memorial, located at five-nine-five-zero Forest Lawn Drive, but condolences to the family and thanks to the caregiver. I think that's why it's so important that we remember the people who provide care for our family members because of the, the burden that it lifts from our shoulders so we can just enjoy them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gruehl?
To add my comments as well about Eunice. She was one of the first people to have that government affairs job in an entertainment industry, you know, in a, in a studio. It became a regular occurrence in many of the other studios, but Eunice really created that path, created a, a personality and an individual who, I think all of us remember, I saw her so many times here in the City Council chambers during the past, for me, last twenty years. She was someone who, who not only did her business in taking care of the company she represented, but I think as both Ms. Perry and Mr. Labange have said, she was also very much community-minded, and I think she set the, really the stage and the, the bar very, very high for the importance of having a entity like Paramount be active in their community and support philanthropically, but also care about what happened in the neighborhoods. And so, she always had a smile on her face, she always told you what she really thought, and so she will be sorely missed by, by so, so many individuals, and particularly those of us that had a chance to call her one of our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, we'll see you in Van Nuys on Friday, and Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, and Mr. Reyes has one announcement to make. Mr. Reyes, my apologies.
President.
We can, okay?
I'm over here. In coordination with my office, the Royal Arts Collective is pleased to announce the Views of the River art inspired by the river has moved the City Hall Bridge Gallery for the month of April to celebrate Environmental Month, pretty appropriate with our President Gorbachev's visit. A reception for the artists opened to the public is scheduled for Thursday afternoon, April thirteenth, from two to five. Reception is part of the downtown art walk of exhibition venues in downtown's Gallery Road District that's held second Thursday of every month. Views of the River includes artwork by six local artists, paintings and model prints by Judith Amador, photography by Bill Johnson, paintings by Leo Limon, collaborative artwork of fiber-infused glass by Connie Roman, Julian Nagesh, and drawing by Jane Song. For those of you at home listening, the Bridge Gallery is located on the third floor between City Hall and City Hall East. Public interest, the City Hall is on Main Street. Visitors will need to go through metal detectors and present the photo ID for security guards. City Hall is open Monday through Friday from eight to five p.m. Exhibit continues through the end of April. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will be next in session this Friday in Van Nuys City Hall at ten a.m., and you can testify here via remote from City Hall. Thank you all, and have a great afternoon.